For April 28, 2015. Well, glad to see a few people out on such a beautiful evening. Can we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Brett Brown?
Here.
Barry DeHannan?
Here.
Keith Brennan?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
St. Paul Siedu?
Here.
Carl Weiner?
Here. People will stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of quick announcements. If you have your cellphone, if you can put it on silent or vibrate, that will help avoid silly noises in the crowd. If you're handing out any paperwork during the hearings or during the open public session, if our board can get a copy, too, that helps for our files. We just came out of a committee of the whole meeting where we had a discussion with Chief Civil Deputy Prosecutor Daniel Gibson regarding two cases pending litigation, Ruth versus Watkin County and Becker versus Watkin County. And I think Mr. Brown has a motion.
Mr. Chair, in the matter of Kathleen Ruth versus Watkin County, Daniel Bedella, et al., unnamed John Doe's to be named later on date. I make a motion to authorize the defense and indemnification for Daniel Bedella, a Watkin County employee, finding he was, one, acting in a manner in which the county had an interest; two, was acting in the discharge of a duty imposed or authorized by law; and, three, was acting in good faith.
All right, we have a motion in front of us. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, in the matter of Asha Becker versus Watkin County, Sheriff Bill Alfo, Chief of Corrections Wendy Jones, Lieutenant Greg DePaul, Sergeant Statch, deputies Turner, Onasco, Greenhalla, Clark Strand, George Assink, Langorack, Stalling, Cardinal, Jane Doe and John Doe, Dr. Stuart Andrews and Nurses Nikki Greenhull, Shari Holst, Debbie Parks, Connie Mehmet, Maggie Manna, and Simone Bell. We find that to authorize the defense and indemnification of the above-named offices, Watkin County employees and contract employees, finding they, one, were acting in a manner in which the county had an interest; two, were acting in the discharge of a duty imposed or authorized by law; and, three, were acting in good faith.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We also had a committee of the whole meeting earlier this afternoon at 4:00 to discuss the new jail project with Executive Laus. It was an ongoing discussion. We're going to be having another discussion next week at our Board of Health meeting. The executives posted some more information about both the jail and about a new initiative we're trying to do on jail diversion projects. It's on the County Executive's website under the new jail project. Just a promotion, we have lots of advisory committees. We're always looking for citizens to take part in those. The council's accepting applications for two vacant positions on the surface mine advisory committee. Applicants must be qualified registered voters of Watkin County. You must either be a geologist or represent a potable domestic groundwater supply. The point in the term is two years. There's applications at the back of the room today. If there's anybody here that's interested, there's also applications on the county council office or on the county council website. Or we can mail you one if you want one. For more information, please visit the council website or you may call, email, or visit the council office. There's also an opening on the Planning Commission, a recent opening in District 3. So if people are interested in any of those, well, that would be great if we could get some applications. We're going to move right on to our public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is an ordinance granting Sound Internet Services Incorporated a non-exclusive franchise for the provision of telecommunications services. And it looks like we have the new... No one's signed up for that hearing, but I'm going to open the public hearing anyway. So the public hearing's open. Is there anybody that wants to talk to us about Sound Internet Services, this franchise agreement? Last chance. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing in honor of the wishes of the council.
Move approval.
Mr. Canada's moved approval. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Brett Brown?
Yes.
Barry DeHannan?
Yes.
Keith Brennan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
St. Paul Siedu?
Yes.
Carl Weiner?
Yes. On to our next public hearing, which is an ordinance establishing parking restrictions on Bennett Drive. And I'm going to open that public hearing, and the only person to sign up is Greg Brown. If there's anybody else, certainly you'll get your chance. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Greg Brown, Watkin County. I sat in on the committee meeting last night when Sergeant Baden made relief from this restriction. I really supported. I volunteered on this on patrol program with the sheriff. And we're off in there marking cars for abandonment and other issues. And the thing that Sergeant didn't point out is we're off in there in the morning, earlier hours, and that apartment complex here is full of kids. And the school buses come. And they block off that road, and all those cars are on. And those kids come run between the cars and around the road structure to get to the bus. I really, really support him. I think it's a good idea that he came up with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to us about an ordinance, parking restrictions on Bennett Drive? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing in honor of the wishes of the council.
Move approval, and I'd like to speak to you.
Ms. Brenner has moved approval? Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, it was in the Public Works Committee. And he even had photos and stuff showing there is no sight distance at all there. I mean, it's very dangerous. So removing the cars that are there all the time would give a lot better sight distance. And it's a high area for crashes and things like that, too.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Brett Brown?
Yes.
Barry DeHannan?
Yes.
Keith Brennan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
St. Paul Siedu?
Yes.
Carl Weiner?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. We are on to our open session. This is where anybody from the public is welcome to come up and talk to us. You each get three minutes. There's a warning, there's about 30 seconds left. As you come up, if your name is more complicated than Smith or Jones, and if you want to us, tell your last name for us, we will get it right in the record that way. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, my name is Dean Brett, B-R-E-T-T. I live at 601 here in Flint Lane, Dublin, Washington. I practice law at 1310 Pennsylvania Period. Just as doctors look at medical journals to keep abreast of medicine, lawyers look at law reviews to keep abreast of the latest developments in law. And I was reading the Seattle Journal of Environmental Law the other day, and I came across an article I'd like to share with you. I am not going to comment on whether you should approve the Gateway Pacific Terminal. You are obligated to keep an open mind on that until you hear all of the others. But both you and the prosecuting attorney should be aware of the law which will govern your consideration of that issue. Some individuals have indicated the opinion that you do not have the authority to turn that down. So a law professor at CLA University and a leading law review lawyer wrote an article in the Seattle Journal of Environmental Law concluding that those arguments are without merit. The conclusion is that if, after considering all of the evidence, you decide to deny a permit for the Gateway Pacific Terminal, you are well within your legal rights to do so. I have a copy of the article for each member of the council and for the prosecuting attorney. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this to your esteemed team. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the record, I agree definitely.
I'll be pointed to. Is this your article?
No. Way above me.
Just for clarity, is this the whole thing?
Oh, no, it's the article... It's about a 50-page article. It's called "Colin Commerce Local Review of the Gateway Pacific Culture Amendment."
It says, "We've been so cautioned about this. I'd like our attorney to let us know what it is. She thinks we ought to read the article or not."
I'd like an opportunity to look at it. And if you guys could just maybe let Dana hang on to that until I have an opportunity, maybe.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. And just to summarize very briefly, 20 minute presentation, and you were so gracious to allow us to give this afternoon to the Public Works and Public Safety Committee. I want to say thank you very much for allowing us to do that. And for the record, I just want to go on recording or whatever, that we really do want the Restorative Community Coalition to be seen and understood as representing those people who are like in the silent silo, the people who are scared to speak, who are disempowered to speak, who have either been criminalized or are members of family who have been criminalized, and people who have signed white papers and nondisclosures, and people who are employed by the government or employed by contractors or our judges or our government agents who cannot speak on the kinds of subjects that would say, you know, we're not in favor of what the authorities are doing. So I want to speak to that. And I want to say that we've sort of been working to find the language to speak about alternatives. There are many people who think that just because we say that we want an alternative to jail, that means that we don't want a new jail. We do need a humane jail. But alternatives are also pre-jail alternatives. There's alternatives once you've been arrested or once you have made a mistake or you've had an error. Those are different kinds of alternatives. And then alternative programs after you've been incarcerated is a completely different kind of alternative. So I wanted the public to be aware of that, that there's a big difference. And we just published an article in today's Herald about the fact that we actually believe that spending $122.5 million on a new jail will not solve the social problems that we're dealing with in the marketplace. We've got extreme poverty. We've got over-criminalization issues. It's become a national issue. We've got many, many crisis-level things. And it's clear from the public hearing last week that there also is a crisis in Watkin County that we need and the council needs to move on. And what we want to urge you is to not just buy a jail to solve the crisis. A jail won't be built for four years. That jail is going to further impoverish the people of Watkin County. And the operating costs on that jail have not been projected, and it's very expensive. So from a very realistic business perspective, I urge the council to put off making a decision on what size or where you're going to build a brand-new jail and take the five different actions that we've outlined, one of which is review the current policy to see if we can reduce the people in the jail. Number two, build some kind of mental health facility to be in line with good public policy. Number three, move the sheriff's facility outside of the building so that they're out of the lock of fire in case that thing crashes. And number four, build a restorative justice facility. And then do whatever it takes to then analyze and build a better facility that works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Brown, Watkin County. First of all, the Public Works meeting today, I want to thank you all for your respect and listening to the citizens from O'Leary. Very proud of you. You don't know how hard those people have worked on that. Just wanted you to know. Appreciate your attention to that tonight. Now, off to the real business. Resolution AB 2015-133, flood control, that's taking $8,000 for the flood control dollars. It doesn't say what I'm hearing, but it's on your agenda, which is not very transparent. But again, I question this as I pay taxes into flood control money, and it's designed to take care of gathering the flooding and flood protection and issues from flooding. And here you're taking $8,000 out of it. It's mostly already spent, by the way, in order today for protection, which is a good cause, great cause, for getting the phosphorus floods down on the way to Watkin. Now, I still believe this has nothing to do with flood control or flood issues. And it's a good cause, but it should have another source of revenue. And we shouldn't be fooling the people. I would really object to flood money being spent for pollution projects. We should designate pollution projects and pay for them with pollution money. I also would speak against 140, which is using the flood control dollars for the plumbing unit. Again, great reason to spend money, but it shouldn't be flood control money. I object to this strongly and continue to do it every time you do it. It's not transparent to hide in here either. That's exactly what's happening here. People don't know they're using it for the TMDL. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Heidi. Thank you, thank you for your... for our opportunity to present you today. It really fulfills at least part of my need to be able to speak. And I too want to put on public record because it wasn't... our presentation wasn't filmed earlier today about some of the pre-jail alternatives that I spoke of earlier and using current resources in existing buildings within our community. We've been researching the alternatives to jail for several years now. And so some of the places that we have seen and don't know if they'll work, but they're mostly empty or can certainly be utilized in different ways is St. Joseph's South Campus. They will say, "This building can be used as a detox substance abuse treatment, mental health with skilled nursing, classrooms, trainings, offices, and possibly housing." That's just one building. Then the Division Street property, which is now the TRIO Center and the work release facility, could remain triage with all of mental health and skilled nursing, detox, and drug treatment. It could be used to house... a jail to house 250 to 300 people, possibly with the remodeling or expansion. It could be the Restore Life Center, which we have supported and had a vision before in our community for a long time, which is not just free entry, but it's helping people become functional citizens. They would be low-risk and with work release and other life skills to be taught. And then Baker Creek, which is the building that we've been looking at and actually have some forward movement on that, possibly be the detox center, the Restore Life Center, drug treatment possibly, and a reentry center. And then the Girard Street Detox Building has been empty for, I know these eight years because that's where our first Reentry Coalition meeting was. Why are we not using that already? And it can be used for drug treatment and possibly the reentry center. The old Humane Society. We have two old Humane Societies, one at the airport and one in Irongate, that can be used for a work center, dog training, or...
Homeless Communities.
Homeless Communities. And the other facilities, the Emergency Management Center, it's a big building, I guess. Sheriff's headquarters might be able to move in there. We have existing buildings that could be used for the Restore Life Center, 24/7 Restorative Justice Center, Activities Center, Homeless Communities, and existing areas that were already identified by Western Washington students for homeless communities. We have lots of empty buildings. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think I've seen many of you quite a bit today. My name is Ray Daraboll. I live in a county just outside the city limits. I was one of the 13 members of the Jail Planning Task Force. We met every other week for months. We did our homework. And I actually resent some of the comments that were made in this room today by the people that spoke before me. They said there were no needs assessment. If you look in the documents, yes, there were needs assessments. There were testimony taken from people that came. They were open meetings. People were allowed to speak and consider. And yet, the 13 people from a variety of backgrounds came to unanimous decisions. The recommendation to the council for our instructions were unanimous. So I really resent some of the characterizations that have been made about the new... or as I call it, the safe new jail process. Now, one thing I want to share with you that was asked of me by Sergeant in jail last Friday. We've got a situation where there's hypothetically a man on the street waving his arms, yelling loudly, carrying on. People feel threatened by that man. The police intervened and picked him up. If they are able to take him to what we don't have today, the triage center, and have that person to be dropped off there to be evaluated to find out if they're mentally ill, high on meth or something like that, or on alcohol, or accuse the man of disturbing the peace or some other crime, threatening public, and take him to jail. In the case where the person is taken to the triage center, it would be necessary, if the person continues to behave that way, to put them in a room to calm down. Because the clinicians don't want to deal with a person that's got a tendency towards violence. So that person would be put in a room. The room would be locked till they calm down. If they were to go to our safe new jail, they would be booked in, put in a room in the medical facility. The door would be locked, and they would be allowed to calm down. The sergeant said to me, "What's similar between those two situations?" I said, "In both situations, the person is incarcerated." Think about that. The other thing I wanted to share with you, they finally have truth in advertising in what I call the so-called triage center, which never was a triage center and never met the state standards. And now with the sign on it that says, "Social Detox Crisis Rescue." So that's the name of that place. Social Detox Crisis Rescue. I'm really glad you're considering putting together a task force for behavioral health issues. It's long overdue. There's a lot that can be done. I don't know how much it'll actually reduce the booking rates. The people that really should be talked about... The jails need to be attacked, but the people that interface with the folks in trouble are the police. And I had never heard that you guys interviewed any police and sheriff deputies. There are the points of... Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else during the open session? Seeing none else, I'm going to close the open session. And we're going to move right into our normal business. First up is the consent agenda from finance.
Mr. Chair, the Watkin County Finance Committee met today, and we considered items 1 through 7 of the consent agenda. And these will move for a recommendation to the full council with a vote of 2 to 0 with Mr. Siedu absent.
All right, so we have the full consent agenda in front of us. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those passing unanimously. Natural Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The one item we have here has been removed. The one... So we have nothing for consideration tonight.
All right.
But if you want anything for reports to go through the other...
Chair. Okay, back to finance.
Mr. Chair, we discussed a resolution, previous ordinance regarding the change to the purchasing system. And there was a recommendation that we move to amend the existing ordinance. I'd like to remove the ordinance adopted on April 14, 2015. The amended to reflect an effective date of October 1.
All right, so we have a motion in front of us to change the effective date on the ordinance regarding purchasing. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I think we should leave the ordinance as is until we come up with something else. And I think it would stimulate us getting something quicker to leave it this way. And I'm totally not convinced that we would have any problems leaving it the way it is. So I'm not going to support it.
All right, any other discussion on Mr. Brown's motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that passes 5 to with Councilmember Brenner and Mann opposed.
Mr. Chair, there's an ordinance amending the 2015 Watkin County budget. Fifth request to amend at $136,500. This was discussed in committee and was recommended with a vote of 3 to 0.
Okay, so we have the ordinance amending the Watkin County budget. Ms. Brenner?
I would like a little more explanation. I, you know, I understand what that $80,000 is for. But I guess I'm not real comfortable having it come from the flood control monies either. It seems to me that we have other monies that are available for that, and it really has nothing to do with flooding. And when it's little amounts, I've, you know, I've gone along with it. But this is quite a bit more than just a little amount. I'd like to hear from staff because maybe there is a relationship to flooding that I'm just not getting. But if anybody here would like to speak to that,
Mr. Hutchins, welcome back to the fray.
Yeah, chief class.
Good evening, thank you. I think it's worth pointing out that the question that was brought up in the public comment about having to do with what monies from the flood control zone district are allocated for is a reasonable one for you all to consider. The fact of the matter is that there is an ongoing commitment to resolving some legal questions around the TMDL. That commitment is ongoing. That commitment is ongoing, and of course, we would like to bring that to a close at a time in the past, and that's going to require a portion of this eighty thousand dollars. And since we have no, no source, other source of revenue that is presently under consideration, and it is entirely illegal that that money be spent in this particular matter, in fact, the two-year budget was written around pretty substantial allocations of flood control zone district monies for storm water work. I would urge you strongly to consider passing this ordinance. Bottom line is, we need to wrap this TMDL conversation up, and it's going to require these dollars. We can have a broader conversation in the future perhaps about the appropriate funding for storm water.
Mr. Mayor, is the flood control zone tax, is that county-wide?
That is.
Including City of Ballingham?
Yes.
Including my house, which sits high on a hill and does not have any chance of getting flooded?
I guess so.
That's true.
Okay, just to check. Ms. Brenner.
Well, I agree, but when this was initially passed, it was passed specifically for flood control issues, and since then, it's kind of been opened up a little bit more and more, and I just feel like it's important. The City of Ballingham does have flood control issues.
Not my house.
No, and not at my house in the county, but I pay into the tax too. It's for the, the better good regarding flood control. So I'm just saying, this, this particular issue, I do completely support using money for this, but I don't see why we don't do it the same way we do other, when we're involved in other legal cases. We allocate the money, but we don't take it out of the flood control fund. This, to me, is a legal mediation issue. It has nothing to do with flooding, and it should just, you know, be, be acted on outside of the flood control fund. I, I mean, you made a point, and I actually agree with it.
Mr. Brown.
I admit to being somewhat puzzled by why this issue keeps coming up, because I've got the RCW in front of me here. RCW eighty-six point one-five point zero-eight-zero, section two, says, "The flood control zone monies can be used to plan, construct, acquire, repair, maintain, and operate all necessary equipment. As somebody's improvements in works to control, conserve, remove flooded waters and storm waters, and otherwise carry out purposes in this chapter, including without limited to protection of the quality of water sources." So this is illegal use of the fund.
Ms. Brenner.
I didn't say it wasn't legal. Those, I think that RCW was, was enacted after we passed it. I just remember things had, things changed. This happens all the time. We pass, you know, a fee or a tax for something, and then it gets expanded in its usage. I didn't say it was illegal, and so I wish, you know, everybody had heard what I did say, which is, I just don't think it's appropriate.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Would it make you feel better if the name of the fund was just surface water instead of flood control?
It would if it went to the public and changed it, yeah, and did it instead. I could put it on the ballot, and I'll find that.
Put it on the ballot, changing the name of the fund?
Changing it and enacting the, the thing as a, whatever you just said. I don't remember if this, the flood control fee actually was on the ballot or not. I don't remember. It wasn't on the ballot, but I do remember there was a lot of support for it because it was about flood control, and everybody's got flood issues in Watkins County, all jurisdictions do. It's just that every time we, you know, tweak, tweak, tweak on that flood control money, it's, I think Councilmember Brenner said it best at one point, that one of these days we're going to have a big flood issue, and there will not be the money available in the fee, in the fund, to be able to counteract that if it's a bad one. So I just feel like this is an issue that belongs, take it out of the current expense fund, take, you know, there's a lot of places you could, you can take this from, but I'm not comfortable. And I, okay, I'm making a motion that we remove that from the budget.
All right, so there's a motion in front of us to remove that eighty thousand dollars from the current ordinance in front of us. I'm going to speak against the motion. You know, this is not a new thing. I think we started in about nineteen ninety-eight, setting our yearly budget on using this flood money for a variety of watershed planning and water quality issues, all of which are legal under state law, as Mr. Brown suggested. You know, it's not, I don't think there's anybody that's even here that was on the council at that time in the, our historical use of this money.
My business.
About ninety-eight, when the watershed planning started.
I was on the council.
Other than you, and you don't seem to remember, that you've had multiple legal discussions about this over and over and over again, every time the flood fund comes up.
I never said it wasn't legal.
So I'll speak against the motion. Any other discussion? Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry to keep laboring this one, knowing you just wrote it down pretty easily, but what, I don't, still don't really understand what your concern is. Is it just, you feel like it should only be used for specifically like impounding water, flood control infrastructure?
I, I think it should be used for flood control related issues, and I can't say that this is related to flood control. This is a good issue, it needs to happen, I just don't want to see it come out of the flood fund.
So then, why, why do you feel that way? I don't, I don't know why you feel that way. Can you explain that?
Okay.
Just because of the name of the fund, or?
We have, we have been very lucky for a while now. We haven't had a bad flood. It's just a matter of time, and it's going to happen again, and we have had some pretty major ones in the past. This, this was initially created, this fund was initially created to help, to be there in the crisis, and we keep whittling it down, with issues that aren't related to flood control. And it's legal to do it, don't.
You broke Mr. Brenner into the air.
Go for the question.
You first.
I think this is a good discussion. I mean, this is one of those issues where you could actually, I can, and others can argue on both sides of this argument and feel good about it. I mean, it, it, there are valid points on both sides. I think that both issues are extremely important. Both protecting the residents in Watkins County from the, the results of devastating floods is extremely important, and it's what the fund was initially established for, but then again, the protection of Lake Watkins and other water bodies and, and streams and rivers in, in our county are extremely important as well. I do think that this issue coming up is, is actually a good thing, because it makes us realize that there isn't enough money to address all these issues with a limited amount of funding. I mean, protecting Lake Watkins, we're finding out more and more, is getting to be a very expensive proposition. And then again, as, as Councilmember Brenner said, we've been very fortunate over the past several years from having significant flood events, but the question is, not if it's going to ever happen, but when. And so I think we need to really understand and, and look at it realistically, that we can't continue, and we shouldn't build our efforts to protect Lake Watkins on the flood fund. I, I think that we need to do it, but where do we get that money from? The eighty thousand dollars is, on the whole scheme of things, is not going to make or break the flood fund, and that's why I'm going to, I'm going to not support the, the motion before us, but I do think that the administration, working with the council, should look for other revenue streams and sources to help with, with storm water and other efforts to protect Lake Watkins and other water bodies in Watkins County.
Mr. Brown.
Well, I go for the question.
Okay, the question's been called for, and we're going to, we're going to end the debate. I think we've heard both sides a couple of times. All those in favor of the amendment to remove the eighty thousand dollars from this ordinance that would be used for the TMDL, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That fails six to one with Ms. Brenner in favor. Now we have the original ordinance to amend the two thousand and five Watkins County budget fifth request in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in front of us. Further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to roll call.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Brennan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sam Palcado?
Yes.
Carl Lerner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, other items, where the council was acting as the Watkins County Flood Control Zone District Board Supervisor.
Go ahead.
There's a resolution amending the two thousand and fifteen Watkins County Flood Control Zone District Budget, first request in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. This was, I guess it was destined, this was a discussion committee, and it was recommended for approval with a vote of three to zero.
All right, so we have a motion to approve that resolution with our county, Watkins County Flood Control Zone District Board Supervisor hats on. Any discussion?
Should I try again?
Sure.
Okay, this is the way we could, it would still be happening. We could say, "We supported it because of the budget amendment, but we want to see this come from a different source." CIAI will say.
So was that a motion, or a statement?
Just that I'm voting no, and I hope others vote no, and we take the money from, they from the general fund. We take it all the time for other things people want.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to approve this resolution? Seeing none, we're ready to roll call.
Pete Brennan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sam Palcado?
Yes.
Carl Lerner?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. So that passes six to one with Councilmember Brenner opposed.
Mr. Chair, the next item is to request authorization for the county executive to enter into a leasing agreement between Watkins County Flood Control Zone District and Percy, Hakea, sorry, Hakeaten. I'm really good at screening up names, so. Doing business as Evernook Dairy for a property located at seven-four-three-five Emerson Road, Emerson, in the amount of one thousand and fifteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And this was discussed and approved in the committee with a vote of two to zero with the council members absent.
All right, so we have the motion to approve this authorization. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item is to request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Watkins County and Vida Environmental to provide facilitation services for the wire-up planning unit meetings in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. This was discussed in committee and was recommended for approval with a vote of two to zero with the council members absent.
All right, so we have that request for authorization, we have the motion to authorize that in front of us, still wearing our flood control zone district board supervisor hats. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're on to planning and development.
I'm dying to ask you further. Okay, we won't.
No, you can ask.
No, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. Did you look at me, Mr. Chair, about planning and development?
Yes.
Okay.
Public participation plans is on my list.
Yeah, in the planning committee today, we had the draft public participation play for the Watkins County Planning and Development Regulation Amendments, and we discussed this at length. We recommended approval of the land commission's recommendation, and I move approval.
All right, so we have the motion to approve the public participation plan in front of us. Any discussion? Brenner?
Oh, yes, we did with that. Okay, yeah, fine.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We're on to council appointments. This is an appointment to the Sumas Everest Nuxak Flood Subzone. We have three applicants for two positions, and the applicants are Barry Jurgens, Larry Maddis, and Thomas Swartwood. I'm having trouble naming these names, too. Brown? So it looks like we need to vote for two of these people. First, we need nominations.
Mr. Chair, I nominate both three.
All right, so all three individuals have been nominated for the Flood Subzone, and you want to call names, or you don't?
Carl Lerner?
Maddis and Swartwood.
Red Brown?
Jurgens and Maddis.
Ken Mann?
Maddis and Swartwood.
Sam Palcado?
Jurgens and Maddis.
Barbara Brenner? Oh, sure, hold on. Jurgens and Maddis. Pete Brennan?
Jurgens and Maddis.
Barry Buchanan?
Jurgens and Maddis.
All right, so if I counted right, Mr. Jurgens and Mr. Maddis have been appointed to the Sumas Everest Nuxak Flood Subzone Advisory Committee, and due for your application and their service.
Mr. Chair, I may just remind the unsuccessful applicant and everybody else that there's positions available as alums in the flood zone, and I would encourage you to apply that.
All right, next is executive appointment, a request for confirmation of the county executives' concurrent reappointment of Barbara Plaskett, or a city appointment to the Ballingham Watkins County Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion to confirm? Move to confirm. Mr. Buchanan has moved to confirm, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, a request confirmation of the county executives' appointment of Zacharelli Frescivaldi Grimaldi to the Americans with Disabilities Act Compliance Committee. You ought to get the appointment just for the name, okay? Any, is there a motion to confirm?
I just want to say, I worked with this gentleman before, so I know.
All right. Okay, Mr. Mayor has moved to confirm. Any further discussion of Mr., I got to try it one more time, Zacharelli Frescivaldi Grimaldi?
That's kind of.
Yeah. Sounds Irish, I think. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Frescivaldi Grimaldi. We are on to introduction items. We have two introduction items this evening. One is a receipt of an application for a surface mining advisory committee geologist position, with that, and the other is a resolution approving an agreement for the sale of a license to provide legal property access over county-owned land, and the other one has been removed this evening. There's a motion to introduce these things. Mr. Mayor has moved to accept these for introduction. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those passing unanimously. Other committee reports, was there anything else in natural resources this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we had a great presentation by a very articulate young woman named Janet Plagerman. She's the Watkins County, twenty-fifteen Watkins County Dairy Ambassador, and she gave us a presentation called "Our Youth, Our Future of Dairy in Watkins County." It was very informative, it gave us a, kind of the big picture of what's going on in Watkins County, and she's just excited to be involved and help promote the dairy industry throughout our.
All right. Lightning?
Mr. Chair, we had a continuing discussion on vacation rental by owners and whether or not, and how to regulate them. We still have a, a number of issues to further discuss, such as aquatic invasive species and septic tank performance, when you have large groups coming into a home that might be designed for smaller number of people, enforcement and lack thereof, a certain regulation out in the county, and whether or not we should have safety standards for VRBOs, and how we can ensure that the VRBOs are paying the appropriate lodging taxes, because that is what all the lodging industry folks pay into, which is used to market in Watkins County and help attract all these fine tourists. So quite a bit to get through on that one, and it's going to be in committee again, probably in two weeks.
All right, thank you. Was there anything else in finance?
Mr. Chair, we had a presentation today by Kevin at our Transition Bikes, a very interesting company that, that started in Seattle, moved here because of, guess what, quality of life and the recreational opportunities, and also because of their access to the energy market. I think he said they have eight employees, are expected to double that in the future, and sell over thirty-five countries based in Watkins.
Yeah, it was a great presentation. Anything in Public Works?
Yes, we had three very interesting presentations. The first was from an independent committee on Long Island, who did a whole bunch of research on a state ferry that's going to be surplus, and the pros and cons, and it was, they did enormous work on this, so I'm just really pleased with what, what they've provided for us, and my understanding is, Rob May from Public Works is going to do some analysis for it, about it, and come back to us with some analysis, which is great. Then we had a presentation by the Restorative Justice Group, and I gave the information we got to Tyler Schroeder from the executive's office, because I was very impressed that a lot of the information and a lot of the points made are exactly what we are trying to do with this resolution, this new resolution we're working on. I checked them off even before the presentation, and it was like three-quarters to four-fifths of them, so I think that's a pretty good, pretty good start. Last, but definitely not least, was an interesting presentation on the Burberry Mirm pedestrian walk thing that, that is being worked on, and it's really interesting, it's kind of moving on schedule, which is nice, but there are going to be some issues that are going to come forward to us that might be a little prickly, so stay tuned.
All right, thank you. Is there any other business items this evening for the council? Brenner?
Yes, actually, I wanted to add this because I was not allowed to say it in committee, and there was a discussion in committee regarding, finance committee, regarding the Opportunity Council, that, a proposal, which I think is a terrific proposal, but I wanted to add that we all got invited to this charrette that was going to be out at the Resource Center, and I did go, and it's, this is a mouthful, so I'm going to read it. It's, it was called the Kendall slash Columbia Valley Connectivity Plan Association, and they are, they've got lots of the same goals as the Opportunity Council, so I think not only is that a good fit, but what a, what a great idea for expanding services in the Fliddles area. in the foothills area. I just think it's wonderful. So if anybody gets, if you have an opportunity to maybe get a copy of the charrette or anything connected to it, a great idea to look at it. And that's all I want to say.
All right. Yes, I think the foothills area's really got their act together in the last 10 years.
Unbelievable, basically.
Any other business items for the council this evening? Seeing none, how about reports from council members? We'll start at that.
Well, I just want to add, last Saturday, there was an annual festival or community event at the Living and Sick Temple. And except Jack Lawless and Cindy and Sheriff Bill Alphokine, and there were more than 3,000 people there, and they spoke to people. And I think it was a great event, as well as connecting to the government officials. It's great.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brown? Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know, we've been biting our nails whether or not the Congress was going to reauthorize the Secure Rural Schools program, which they had not funded for last year or this year, of course. And fortunately, Congress had the wisdom after further fought on the issue, and of course, a lot of prodding and pushing by the National Association of Counties, as well as school districts from many counties throughout the country. And so it was kind of incorporated into another piece of legislation called the DOT bill. And it passed Congress, and it's retroactive from fiscal year 2014, and also funds 2015. So that's good news. I think the president may have already signed it or is about to sign it. So that's good news. And I guess the only other thing I'd like to say is that I appreciate the council getting through this meeting in fairly good time. Today is my 43rd wedding anniversary, and I'm going to get to actually, in person, convey my happy anniversary sentiments to my lovely wife. Yeah, I heard our discussion about the jail is getting a little... Well, congratulations on your anniversary. Thank you. Mr. Brenner?
Yeah, and I want to say this, congratulations. Nobody who's here this evening who wasn't here all day understands that we were back-to-back meetings all day. So tell her thank you from us. We very much appreciate it. Happy anniversary. There are a couple of things. I was out at the, oops, it was called Investing in Our Future. The Lummi Nation had this presentation, which was very interesting. And they do invest in different programs, a lot of them social service programs. What amazed me was, I thought I knew all the social service programs that exist, and I don't. And I was so impressed. They, you know, invested in some of the ones we had heard of and some that we hadn't. And I want to say, it's that public council members who do was also there. And I thought it was very impressive. It was unique. The other thing is, there was an oil preparedness workshop, which was incredibly informative and helpful. And I hope, we're supposed to get a lot of the stuff they presented, we're supposed to get it in the email I haven't gotten yet. But I was disappointed just in one thing. It was about the ships, the tankers and everything. I would have liked to see something also about the rail trains, which, and so I did mention that next time, it'd be really nice to have that presentation. Maybe we could send her a little email from the council about that. Because this was great. They had everybody there together. They had, people had put out the fires, the different jurisdictions. They had a fellow from BP who went into great detail on exactly how they use those booms and how they keep things from happening. Because, yeah, and anyway, it was extremely helpful to understand more about the tankers. Again, I would like to see an addition, but that, I didn't know anything like what they told us about the tankers.
All right. Mr. Mann?
St. Paul Sudoo and I went up to the Farm Friends Board Meeting a week ago and met with their board of directors and had a really nice visit with them. They were very appreciative that we took the time to go out there. And I just heard through other folks who weren't there, but people who attended, that it meant a lot to them that the county council members would show up. On the one hand, I think it's great that we did it. On the other hand, I feel kind of bad that that small of an effort, that small of a gesture meant so much to them. So I want to make sure we stay on task and interact with those folks a little bit more often. They're really smart, they're really engaged, they are involved on the water issues. And I would highly recommend, excuse me, that other council members take advantage of those Farm Friends Board meetings and talk to Henry Intervance, and just go out there and tackle them for an hour or so about the issues that we're dealing with.
Mr. Buchanan?
I was just second on the Mr. Mann said, Mr. Brown, I went out to one of the meetings with the Farm Friends and found the same thing.
Brown?
So first, on April 25, 1915, my grandfather deployed along several thousand people at an old beach in Glouglou, Turkey, as part of the First World War. He ended up proceeding to fight for seven months, later went on to France. This Saturday, April 25, 2015, I joined 10,000 other people. Most of them were descendants of servicemen from that area. And we set an event on the beach where they landed a hundred years ago and commemorated their service. It was a very interesting experience.
All right. Thank you. And I just want to let people know that we got a thing in our email this morning, that the National Association of Counties is kicking off their nationwide initiative on trying to keep people with mental health issues out of jails. The timing is perfect. They're kicking that off Thursday. I think it's 10:00 a.m., their national webinar, which I think some of us can tune into. And it sounds like they may have some grant money available, perhaps, for local communities to help figure that out, which we'll dovetail very nicely with the initiatives that the council and the executive administration is working on right now. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing weird, Jerry?